All right.
Actually, time. All right. Hey, everybody. It's, uh, I'm calling to order the special meeting of the City Council of the City of San Clemente of June 22nd, 2023. And we are starting here at 1:45. Before we entertain some motions, do we have any comments about closed session?
We have one speaker comment, Brad M.
Hello, counsel. Um, I want to talk this item because there's no description here, and yet it appears that it's based on this letter. The code requires that if the plaintiff or the parties know about the lawsuit, in other words, it's not the city trying to prevent something the person doesn't know, disclosure is required. Now, the city attorney has told me that she disagrees with me, and that's fine. She's a smarter lawyer than I am with more background. But why don't we err on the side of transparency? It's not illegal to do it. I noticed that two weeks ago, or I'm sorry, on Tuesday, the document was posted for pickleball related lawsuits. And yet, this was not posted. The letter's available. She's allowing it to be disclosed. Apparently, it's on the site somewhere, but it's not a click attachment like it was before. Let's be consistent. Let's be transparent. Now, let's look at the special meetings. Why wasn't 72 hours provided? If it's all based, which it is, on this letter, this letter was dated June 15th. 72 hours notice could have been provided to the public. What's a special meeting? Not defined in the code as far as I can tell, but it's not this. And it's limited to the item that's special. No description is given of what's special tonight. It could have been disclosed Monday, and 72 hours notice could have been provided. This is not how to handle meetings. Two people are here. Well, three, four people are here. It's not a regular council meeting. This is a very important decision, whether the city's going to give in-
Back to three.
There you go. Thank you, Chris. But here's the thing. Here's the thing. This is a very important, for those of you who don't know, which is probably almost everybody on council, but maybe Steve. Um, I was part of a big group that got district elections on the ballot. The city council wrangled it to two years later so it wouldn't pass. By that time, the steam was gone, and it lost. Um, I think it's right. I think you should do it. And I think by law, um, these lawyers, um, I don't know about this one, but lawyers that have sued have always won. Whether they should win or not under the act, that's questionable, but it's going to be $2 million to $6 million to try not to stop, to try to stop district elections. So my advice, for whatever it's worth, is first of all, let the city know. I would delay this so the city can give their input. And then, secondly, um, just agree to it. And then decide, do you want to have five council districts, seven council districts, a separate mayor? These are all decisions, as long as you're going to change it, that you should actually really look into and consider. So, all those violations, you guys got to do a better job. You got to do more transparency. You got to question, question, question why there's no transparency, why there's no disclosure, and why you, as a council, would want to meet on special notice with no discussion of what's special about this meeting. Now, that may not be required. Again, the code is fairly fuzzy. But why would you go to 24 hours notice without putting in here what was special about requiring you not to give 72 hours notice? And in fact, given that it's not until August that this letter has to be responded to, why don't you do it at your July 19th meeting, when the public could be there? I think it's the 19th, but your July meeting. When the public could comment, you should table this. Closed session, fine, go ahead. But you should table the public session and do what needs to be done properly. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Amanda.
Hi, council members, city staff, city attorney. Um, you know, I'm in agreement with Brad in that a proper notification. Uh, and only that, it was Tuesday night was such a long meeting. I was resting for a while. And, and I laugh because Rick, I was resting because I was nauseous. But anyways, um, the thing is, is that sometimes when, um, you know, people speak into the microphone, it's, they don't speak loud enough, or it's not close enough to them. So I was, as a suggestion moving forward, maybe, um, there should be two announcements, like for a special meeting like this, in the, in the beginning, when people are bright and perky, and then also at the end, where with the microphone on, just to make sure that that public is aware of this. Fortunately, I had a San Clemente resident, um, call me, and I called her back, and she mentioned to me about that. So, um, I really appreciate that. Um, I think that's about it until I talk on this matter on item number three. Thank you very much. And I don't think we should table this, or postpone it for any longer because there is a time requirement on that. Thank you.
No additional speakers under closed session.
Okay. Anyone want to make a motion? Uh, second, no block. Second is Lefler. Alter?
Aye.
It is unanimous.
And go back in after the open session. That's what you're supposed to do here.
I'm running right out of here.
All right, I'm calling the meeting to order here. This is the business meeting portion of our special meeting of June 22, 2022 for the City of San Clemente City Council. We are going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Wayne, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Everyone, please stand, place your right hand over your heart.
Please join me in a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Wayne. Roll call, all members are present.
Make a motion that we waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances.
Second?
Motion is no block, second is Enmire, all in favor? Aye. Close session, report of the city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. Met in closed session on the one item of anticipated litigation listed on the agenda, there was no reportable action.
Thank you. City clerk?
We, would you like to start off this session hearing, public comments? Or?
We don't have a, is there a staff report? Or we like to do that first, or would you like the public comments first?
It's at the council's pleasure, but I will introduce the item for you.
Okay, yes, please do introduce.
Thank you, good afternoon. Thank you, good afternoon. The reason for this special meeting is that the city council received a demand under the California Voting Rights Act on June 15. Under state law, there is a very short window of time in which to respond without facing certain consequences. And the city council only had one meeting planned between that and the expiration of that deadline. Because of that short timeframe, it was necessary that staff introduce the item and receive direction from council about whether we should hire a consultant to gain, to give information to the council that could inform its decision about whether to go to district elections. So, the request from staff is to consider whether you'd like to have a consultant, specifically National Demographics, Inc., look into some demographic issues and come back to the council on July 18th to present those findings that could inform your decision about whether you decide to go to district elections.
Thank you, any questions for the city attorney? Before, we can have discussion later, but any questions?
This time?
Okay, let's hear public comments.
Brad Im, followed by Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Laura Smith.
I get more confused all the time. The city attorney just said there was only going to be one meeting between the deadline. There's two, there was June 20th and there was July 18th, so that's not true. Number two, there's no staff report for today. It says provide directions. No staff report. What are you going to provide directions with no staff report? Public didn't even know anything about this. The letter was not made available, except here. It might have been on the website, but it wasn't attached like the lawsuit was last on Tuesday. Why the non-transparency? Why the cover up? Why isn't the city following the rules? As for, she just said the reason for getting this $60,000 report was for demographics. Those are available in the census, 2020 census, you don't need to pay anything for that. So why would you spend $60,000 for that? And doesn't that beg the question that she didn't mention? That every single time a city's been sued to force district election, the city has lost. So the issue's not demographics, it's, do you have any chance of winning? And the answer is no, you don't. And it'll be $2 to $6 million, maybe more, to defend this between your fees and the other side. So we're not being told the truth tonight. We're not being told the truth at all. The citizens need to show up and discuss what they think. Set a special meeting, set 72 hours notice, and let the citizens tell you what they think. But tell them, tell us all the lawsuits that have been filed, there've been over 100 of them, how many have been successful in stopping district elections? The answer, I believe, is zero. So this isn't a hard decision, you don't need to hire $60,000 of demographics. Was there a bid for that? And what are they going to tell you? There's no scope of services, there's no contract, there's nothing. Do you really think 50 minutes late to the meeting by the council, which was rude and uncalled for, people were sitting here, people left because they couldn't stay that long, you called the meeting, not them. They didn't understand it, and I tried to explain that you're supposed to come out at 2 o'clock and re-go into closed session later. Why are you treating the citizens like this, not giving them the information they need? And this is a travesty to spend $60,000 on this. You can be clear that you're going to lose the city if they allow this lawsuit to go. And the only person and companies will benefit is the plaintiff's lawyer, Jackson, and the city attorney, her firm, or some other firm the city hires. The city will be the big loser, and they don't have the money to give to this. So the obvious answer is, the city's going to go to district elections. What you should do instead is spend the money on deciding what's the best district election policy to go to. Five members, seven members, a mayor, an independent council, a voting mayor, a non-voting mayor? That's much more critical because you have to make that decision. That's not even here! How did that not make it to this? What is going on? What is going on? And I'm going to go back to a point I made earlier. Why wasn't 72 hours' notice given? This letter was dated June 15th. There was plenty of time to give 72 hours' notice, even if it was for today. Thank you.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Laura Smith, followed by Donna Vedrine.
The demand letter received by the city raises some significant questions regarding the issue at large, voting and districting in the City of San Clemente. As you know, this issue has been raised before by a group of residents called Residents for Reform. Their efforts led to a ballot measure, V, that was defeated with less than 30%. It was 29.7 of the vote in support of the, in support of the measure. So, this demand letter raises a new approach to force districting that overrides the electorate's wishes and strips the results of an election. According to this demand letter, San Clemente's system of at-large election dilutes the ability of Latinos and protected class to elect candidates of their choice to, or otherwise, influence the outcome of San Clemente elections for its city council members. In response, by alleging vote dilution and polarized voting by some unknown client, the city is being forced to spend additional funds on an issue that has already been decided upon. The problem is that this attorney appears to be misrepresenting the facts. As the Latino population appears to constitute only 16.1% of San Clemente's population, according to a 2020 census data, and 16.4% per 22 census results. That, not the alleged 18% that she claims, a simple Google search could have informed her of that. The City of San Clemente has been predominantly non-Hispanic community. It further states that only one Latino has been elected in the last 20 years, and that same Latino candidate has been the only one to run for city council in the same years. However, the irony of this comment means that a Latino candidate has had 100% victory rate, and including the other candidate within the last 29 years, there's still 100% victory rate as the prior Latino that was elected, and that was the former late mayor, Steve Apodaca. Per Attorney General Rob Banta's amicus curae, brief for the Pico Neighborhood Association versus the City of Santa Monica, he proposed a standard vote for, a standard for vote dilution that requires plaintiffs show at-large voting system has removed the protected class's ability to exercise meaningful electoral influence that looks to a variety of factors in making this determination. At the surface, there does appear to be a lack of Latino candidates, however, a lack of candidates relative to Latino success appears to undercut Mrs. the attorney's allegations. Since each time a Latino candidate ran, that candidate won a city council seat, this would indicate that this protected class does exercise meaningful electoral influence. Since when there was a Latino candidate, there is 100% Latino success rate. And arguably, the Latino community's voice and electoral choice has been heard. The question then becomes, why is there a lack of Latino candidates? Ultimately, the issue may be a question of voter engagement, or just merely choice and not vote dilution. Perhaps the city can propose get out the vote type of voter engagement.
Thank you.
Laura Smith, followed by Donna Vedrine, followed by Wayne Agelston.
Okay, yeah, hi, I'm Laura. I don't have much to say, I just found out about this yesterday. Amanda called me and said, oh, do you know there's a special meeting? I said, no. So I looked into it just a little bit, and I kind of have basically the same thing she has to say, that, when she said the districting, I said, we just voted on this a couple years ago, and we voted against it by 70%. Even though there was a lot of scare tactics, one of them was about that we were going to be sued if we didn't have this districting, but we still voted against it, and so far we've been fine. And one of the proponents that was for it, he had been quoted in an article saying, "San Clemente has over 65,000 people in over 19,000 square miles. It is outrageous that four of our council members live blocks or houses from each other." So that was a big thing too, about districting. They were saying, we need to have districting because all the council members are living together. And, but now, this, you guys aren't all now living together, I believe you all live separate, so that...
Oh, we live separately. No animal house here.
Has been taken care of. And also, so now, this person, who we don't know who the client is, I actually wonder if it is the same person that was quoted in this article is trying to stir up this trouble, is now using the Latinos as not being properly representative. But just like Amanda said, the ones that have ran have won. So, that is just not true. And then also, the problem with districting, if you're in a district and only one person is running, or maybe even two, and you've done your homework, and you do not want that person to win, what then? You don't even have a vote. And that's just not fair. And also, in my homework, when I looked up this Michelle Jackson, if you look in the State Bar for Michelle R. Jackson, for Dana Point, the only Michelle Jackson comes up when you, I had a friend kind of actually saw the email. Her email is Bro. And she's most likely married to William Bro. And it's kind of concerning, why would William Bro's wife be the one that is suing us? I mean, we were friends. He had helped us against the toll road, and now she's suing us. That's kind of a concern.
Thank you, Laura.
Donna Vedrine, followed by Wayne Agelston.
Mayor Duncan and council members, the decision to change the way our city council members are elected should not be made without providing the opportunity for San Clemente residents and voters to have their voices heard. A hastily-called special city council meeting in response to possible litigation is not the way to conduct city business and represent San Clemente in changing our local elections. the way to conduct city business and represent San Clemente in changing our local elections. Why is this an emergency, and what is the emergency? Why hasn't then been addressed prior to this sudden emergency requiring immediate action without full understanding of the problems presented? By district voting, by district voting should be on the agenda at a future scheduled City Council meeting with the staff report to educate and give opportunity for San Clemente voters to engage, write letters to council members and city leadership, and be present to speak to the topic of how future council candidates could be elected. As a previous City Council candidate in 2022, I shared some perspective on district elections after talking to many voters in different neighborhoods in San Clemente. I was supportive of bringing elections by district to San Clemente voters for more equitable representation and to avoid the cost of potential litigation. This was in 2022. I also became aware of the strong opposition to district elections of many community leaders in San Clemente, some are in this room tonight, and heard from those opposed to district elections in our neighboring beachside communities of Dana Point and San Juan Capistrano. The public deserves the opportunity to weigh in on the pros and cons of district elections with their engagement and discourse respected and listened to by the four of you elected by San Clemente voters as their representatives, and you also, Rick. This is how democracy works. Your job as mayor and council members is to moderate public discussion and to come to a decision after careful consideration with staff, city attorney, and public input. A carefully thought-out policy will survive many challenges. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Wayne Agelston, and I believe Steve Ruiz and Dennis Grimes had to leave.
Thank you for calling the meeting so quickly. I know you're under a real time period here of 45 days, and so thank you. Before I get into my diatribe, I'd like to say something about our mission statement. It's not here. It's not anywhere in the council chamber. It's on the third floor in a hallway. We need to have it here. So please put our mission statement here. It's an indication of our values. I'd like to give you a little perspective of what happened several years ago. We had a vote in San Clemente. 70% of the people said no to district elections. Well, going to district elections is not dependent upon a vote of the people. You were all elected to represent the values of this community. When this came before us several years ago, three council members all lived in the southwest area of San Clemente. That's no longer the case. All you council members live throughout San Clemente. The percent of Latinos has not changed since that time. It's not 18%. It's still 16% according to the most recent demographics and the census. And also, years, several years ago, we did not have a Latino on our City Council. We do now, who represents 20% of the City Council. So, you know, we, it's not the same as it was. So the circumstances today are even more favorable for elections at large rather than district elections. Let us not be bullied by out-of-town attorney who does not know what San Clemente values are. Hire the demographics. Get some demographics here, that's very important to do. Get some backbone and stand up for what is right in San Clemente. District elections divide this community, any community. They are less representative as individuals can only really go to one council member who will listen to them rather than to a total of five council members. And they're also less representative, as usually, many times, only one person, for example, in Dana Point, only one person runs for elections. And that's not great either. I understand VB&amp;K has also received letters from the same attorney for Laguna Hills and Laguna Niguel. Maybe we should also join forces with them and save some costs in all of this, because they're going to fight this also. And I just wanted to also mention that Amanda, who spoke recently, is Hispanic here also. So thank you very much. Let's not be bullied. Let's fight it. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll call the last two speakers one more time. Steve Ruiz and Dennis Grimes, they did both leave. Okay.
All right. Does anyone want to start the discussion? Or is there any discussion?
I'll start the discussion. I mean, I think the purpose of this meeting today is to give you notice at the next City Council meeting. This will be an agenda item, and there's plenty of time for people to come in and discuss this issue. I think that's plenty of notice. It's almost, it's a significant amount. We did need to take some action to start a process, as discussed by our City Attorney, only because of the time constraints put on by law, and we needed to get some information that, to make us better informed about what our city looks like. It's not the full-blown reports we may get, depending on how this case plays out. But I just want to say, just to give a little bit of background, you know, on these issues and why we're, there's been, I guess I could discuss some of this stuff about the history of CDRA, and it's been on the agenda. There's been 250 school districts that have fought this, or agreed to a settlement of some kind to go to district election, 34 community college districts, 165 cities, one county Board of Supervisors, 35 water special districts, cases, key settlements of cities in Palmdale, Modesto, Anaheim, Anaheim, Whittier, Santa Barbara, Tulare, Camarillo, Compton, Madera, and all of them had to pay significant attorney's fees. So that's what we're facing, and that's what we want information and feedback from the city, is what's, how much should we spend, if anything, to defend this? The law, as it's written right now, is stacked against cities. It really is. I mean, they've written it to such a standard that almost all the cities lose. There's only been one city that's fought this that has taken it to the Supreme Court, and that case is going to be heard by the Supreme Court in five days. And so maybe once we get a better idea of what the California Supreme Court, if they rule against the city, then there will be no cities that have ever won this. And then we have to weigh whether it's worth fighting or going to district elections, and whether the city wants to spend millions of dollars doing that. We'll decide all that at the next meeting, hopefully, and we'll get input before that. But it's, it is a real question, and I just wanted to bring that to the attention of the public. We're not making big decisions, we're not making any decision until we get the impact, the input from our citizens, and figure out what direction they want us to go in. And we, I'd like to get input and emails from our citizens on what they think about this. I think I already know, but any kind of informed decision would help me also through this process.
Thank you. Rick?
Yeah, I'll just, I'll echo what Victor said, and I appreciate all the comments that were made today from the group of citizens that comes and voices their opinion at most council meetings, and really appreciate that. And I urge you to talk to your friends and neighbors, tell them about the 18th, what's going to be. We're going to take some action today, I believe that's going to provide information, a lot that Wayne was asking for, so it'll be available to the residents, it'll be available to us, and that meeting on the 18th, we should be able to have a real good conversation, and I hope that we will come up with a, we won't come up with a solution that's going to make everybody happy, but I'm confident we'll make a decision that at least will be in the best interest of the city.
Okay. Mark?
Yeah, I just want to echo, I really want to make it apparent that we are hearing you, we are listening to you. The decision today is not whether we're going into districts or not. The decision today is, can we, do we want to have a contract to get more information about this, so that we can be better informed, the population can be better informed, and that it will give you time to voice your opinions to us, and we will hear them, we'll just act on them on the 18th. But yes, we absolutely want to hear what you have to say.
Mayor Proton?
Well, it's a little disappointing, because the California Fair Voting Act is designed to prevent polarization, and I don't think San Clemente has had any evidence of polarization of its citizens. The letter in question references Hispanic votes. We've had, as has been mentioned in the public comments, a Hispanic member to this council. The fact that in the last 20 years, we haven't had a single Hispanic candidate actually apply to run, although we've had blacks and Asians run in the last several elections who have scored in the very upper tier of the candidates that have run. So I think this is a strong-arm tactic by the state to compel district elections, when the local citizens have consistently said, we will elect our representatives in the way we choose that best fits our community. And it's another strong-arm attempt by the state legislature, and it's a, and they've opened the muscle of their threat by allowing litigators to have unfettered access to the process with the opportunity to receive literally millions in legal fees for themselves and their consultants at the expense of local taxpayers whose opinion and will is being thwarted. It's a disappointment, but it's the fact of life that we live in, and one that will need to be addressed, and we will be addressing that when our citizens weigh in on July 18.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have a motion?
Well, are we done with all?
I agree with the other comments, and I think this is, we are obligated to act because of this letter, and we're going to do our due diligence and give the public a chance to participate. We almost have a month until our next meeting. Because we, just to remind everyone, we canceled the meeting, the first meeting of July because of July 4. So our next meeting is the 18th, and I just...
We've already passed our...
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't done that yet. No, the City Attorney teed it up and said that the staff has asked us whether we want to hire this consultant.
I move to approve the recommendation of our City Attorney to hire the consultant.
Did you want to do it the $60,000 amount?
Yeah, I'd like a friendly amendment at the amount of, not to exceed $16,000.
You accept that amendment?
Yes.
Okay. The motion is, Geraldo, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Second is No Block. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No, it is unanimous. All right, and does anyone?
I'll move that we adjourn to our next regular council, I'll move that we adjourn to our next regularly scheduled council meeting on July 18. Closed session to begin at 5:00 p.m., regular business meeting to begin at 6:00 p.m. Meeting will take place here in this council chamber located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente. The regular meeting, normally scheduled for July 14, has been previously canceled, as the mayor previously stated.
Motion is No Block, second is Enmire. All in favor? Aye.